Um. I, well, let's just start with this, with the designation terminology that I think we could tackle that in short order. I'm on page ten. Is that right? I guess it's, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get acquainted. Oh, yeah, mine's page ten where the discussion questions and guidance starts.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Correct. Back at page ten.
Right, back at page ten. So it sounds like we've got three options to consider, and I know we started having some discussions last time about, you know, what, what we meant by low density. I know that Commissioner Labonte had some issues with, you know, removing family out of the designation, and I think let's just pick up there. Yanni.
Yeah, thanks. I actually, and I don't know that tonight needs to be the time for this, but I'm struggling actually with our, with the naming of the lowest density as conservation. That term has been there, I think, since nineteen ninety-eight, before we had a strong critical areas code and whatnot. In fact, as we have critical areas all over the city and all these zones. And I'm just questioning whether that's really a, I mean, is that really the point? If we choose to have that density, that's fine, but the, kind of the credibility of saying it's based on conservation is a little questionable, in my view. There are a lot of, in those zones, lots of smaller lots than what the zone calls for. So I want to flag that for later, not get sidetracked right now, but I'd like to flag that issue and maybe come up with a different term for those zones.
A different zone versus conservation?
Correct. It's sort of just stated that those zones are reserved for environmentally sensitive areas. And there are environmentally sensitive areas all over the city. And the, to say that we need twenty thousand square foot lots to achieve conservation under current stormwater standards, critical area protections, is not scientifically credible to me, so I'd like us to just have clear, a clear understanding of why we have those big zones and then have the name reflect that.
Yanni, are you suggesting that, that sensitive areas, critical areas in our community are covered by other policy and so that it doesn't need to be labeled here as conservation?
Correct, because I think it implies that that lot size is needed to achieve environmental protection, and it's not. In my view.
I might be missing something, but what, what is this, is the current?
So conservation is just for the fifteen thousand and twenty thousand mineral.
I see.
And that's the, that's, I'm just raising that, and again, I don't want to sidetrack us right now necessarily, because we have a lot to talk about, but I want to flag that as something I'd like us to come back to, but I'm fine with moving on tonight. I just wanted on the record that I think that's questionable.
Yeah, and you brought, yeah, you brought that up at our last meeting. Does, has anybody given that some additional consideration, and do you have any other comments you want on the record about this? The possibility of removing conservation from this designation?
I think the only thing I would add is, if there's any way to kind of get, you know, the history, the legislative history, or the intent history behind why those areas were zoned that way and called that way, if there's any way we could dig back in the records and find the context that might be relevant to the discussion.
Thank you, and welcome, Sam. I didn't see you in the room.
Oh, I'm in the corner. Hi.
That's a good idea, and if staff were to dig some stuff up, I believe I saw it as being right around nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, which is right when the last annexations happened, including in some neighborhoods that have that zoning.
So are we saying that this conversation is pertinent to the comprehensive plan updates? Or we're just putting this off until?
No, I think it's pertinent to comp plan, but just not tonight. We have a work session on with a bunch of things to talk about, so I just wanted to flag that as a topic for later.
It's actually in the first section of, when we get down to page twelve, it's the land use designations. And it's just, I mean, at this point, please correct me if I'm wrong, anybody or Mark, but the intent here is to digest the recommendations that Christine has made via this marked up copy and discuss whether or not the terminology, you know, the terminology sits well with what we need or want for our community, whether there's omissions or edits that we, you know, want to revise and work that out between ourselves in this meeting so that our next meeting with Christina can be very targeted, very productive and decisive. Yeah, Lois.
You know, that, that was a real troubling section and discussion last time. It created so much confusion and I, you know, just going back, I will touch on what Commissioner Yanni was talking about. Can I make a suggestion for categories? And you guys can take it as you want, but I, I wanted to say instead of conservation low, so there's under current designations, there are one, two, three, four, five designations in the left-hand column. And instead, what I propose is, what if we replaced conservation residential with low DR for low-density residential? The second category, replacing single-family would be moderate DR for moderate-density residential. The third category, replacing single-family residential high would be just high DR, high-density residential. The fourth category would be low DMU for low-density multifamily unit. And the final fifth category instead would be moderate, mod DMU or DMFU. I, I just think that would just clarify and simplify a lot of the different sections. Conservation during the planning process, there will have to be, there are designated you know, critical areas on our critical zoning map identified, so that overlay of that map over this zoning map, I think, would kind of touch upon, you know, Commissioner Yanni's concerns too. Thank you.
I like, I like that suggestion or something like it. Thanks. I appreciate the work on that.
Any other comments about this, about the?
Through the chair, to go back to your comment about the, the feedback tonight and the purpose of Tuesday night is to aim towards consensus and agree where you can, and then flag those issues that need further work, and then Tuesday night with SCJ there, kind of give that consensus feedback as best you can.
Okay, any other comments? Just to sort of do a straw, straw man. Let's, let's see, how did we do this before? I guess, oh, I guess none of you guys were there. So let me think about this for a second. All of those in favor, so I'm going to give you a choice to agree with Commissioner Lee or, or vote for like, need more discussion, and just to see sort of where we're at. So all the, all those in favor of, and you're not like voting, this is just checking for agreement, all of those in favor of her suggestions. Can you just throw your hand up? Sam, you'll need to put yours in the. Okay. Great. All right. Anybody who still wants, okay, hands down, anybody who still wants discussion, I think everybody's hand was up. Okay, great. So as far as I'm concerned, unless you guys have an issue with that, where we have all or majority in agreement, I think we move, move on. If, if something really matters to you, I implore you to be the dissenting voice. It provides for really important conversation, and we definitely don't want to overlook anything. So with that said, we'll move forward with that as our recommendation back to Christina. Now, the rest of the items in this five-point discussion guide regarding equity, this character piece with residential neighborhoods, implementation and climate commitment, I'd like for us to keep coming back to that as we move through this document, if that is okay with you, and I do wish Meredith were here, but okay, if we are on page twelve and thirteen together, I think this is where we can dive into the definitions for these designations, right? So, so on, at the bottom of page twelve, conservation residential low moderate, presuming we have this new designation of low-density residential. If everybody could just take a moment to consider whether or not this definition is fitting.
Hey, Maddie?
Yep.
Can we go back to page? On page ten, it sounds like we needed to pick from option one, two, or three. Is that not correct? Is that kind of a question?
Well, it's, it sounds like, it sounds like we decided that we actually didn't want one, two, or three, and that we're going to recommend a fourth option to Christina. Is that?
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay, cool. And then Nick, do you have all of this, or do I need to take more detailed notes for Christina or Mark?
Getting it pretty good.
Okay. Cool. Presuming nobody has any issues with the edits that are under goal, should, should we share a screen? Would that be easier? I can, I can share mine if that's better, but might be easier for tracking where we're at. Do you want me to share my screen, Nick?
Can you?
I sure think I can. Let's see. Yeah, I mean, you can see, you can see it, right?
Yeah.
Let me zoom in a little bit. Okay, presuming that you are all fine with these edits, speak now if, if you're not. Can we just take a look at the definitions? So replace conservation residential low moderate in your mind with low-density residential using the labels that Commissioner Lee recommended, and can we just take a pass through these definitions, and anybody who sees something that they want to flag, can you speak up?
Maddie, it's Sam.
Yeah.
The only comment I had, and they all looked fine to me, but in the, the old low-density residential high, third one, the only thing I might suggest is we may be old on the parenthetical of the examples of middle housing, because I thought we had to make some decisions under that state bill, or the council had to make decisions under that state bill of which types of middle housing we wanted to have, and before we give the examples, we probably want those to align with whatever the council ultimately decides.
That's from Commerce. That's, it would be coming from Commerce, right, Mark?
This is related to House Bill eleven-ten, and a tier-three city of the model ordinance is out, and how many of the six at a minimum need to be chosen? And it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. The, the planning commission needs to make a recommendation, but seems to need some feedback. And then the entire body of work goes to the city council from summer forward. And so I'm kind of curious what wait for the city council means. If we're steaming towards a recommendation by the planning commission, then a conversation with Christina would be, you know, what are the six types, and how does a tier-three city do that? What is the mandate? So that we're not subject to the model ordinance, but then also a conversation of should there be more or not?
Okay, and Yanni, thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I was under the understanding that we were going to have another session with the other half of the consulting team focusing on middle housing still at some point. I thought they were coming back after the model ordinance came out, which it did. So I assumed here that we weren't yet saying which things we might include, so I was comfortable with the et cetera on some of these, because we might want to consider, you know, like cottage housing being okay in some of the lower-density zones, for example. So I, that was my assumption, and if that's wrong, then I guess we do need to wrestle with it now, but I, I thought we had more information coming on middle housing.
You will. The, the current slide that Christina will show on Tuesday night will show a timeline where housing and Leland will be back in April.
Okay. Thank you.
In terms of definitions, I think we may ask Christina to come back through. I mean, we, we can get into the weeds with this, but I think she will, given the new labels that we're going to recommend, and provided that she, you know, doesn't see any issue with those labels. I think we ought to ask her to take a look at the definitions and just determine where some of this verbiage, like what we'll now be calling moderate, you know, density residential, we may need to update some of these terms. Did anybody else have any input on any of these definitions, any issues with the way they've been characterized that we haven't discussed yet? Yanni, is your hand still up to speak?
No, it's a new one. I would just, in line with my earlier comment on that look conservation, whatever, whatever lowest-density version, I would just strike that last sentence that says this is reserved for certain areas, because again, we have those areas all over the place. So I would propose we strike that last sentence of the definition.
Because they apply to other lots that aren't RS twenty or RS fifteen?
For environmentally sensitive areas in all the other zones.
Every area.
Yes, and it's, like I said, I think it's hard to argue scientifically that these ones are such, so different environmentally that they need to, so again, the zone can stay, as far as I'm concerned, I would just get rid of that sentence.
Yeah, I, I, I can see your, your reasoning behind that. I'm, I'm in agreement with Sam that before we, before we, you know, recommend striking something and potentially lose it through the editing cycle. I'd like to, you know, hear a little bit more about that legislative context, and I'd also like mindful that we even have people in the room tonight who might have some of that context. I don't want to take an axe to this if there are, if there were important reasons why that designation was applied to RS twenty and fifteen and not RS, you know, nine and ten.
That's fine. I would just flag it so we remember to
Yeah.
get more feedback on that. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Clearly not the point I needed. Anybody else?
I, I have a comment about, I just don't like how that, the repetition of alternative housing units shows up three times in this, in this section, and it's almost leading such as accessory dwelling units, I, can we just put instead, just allow for innovative alternatives to the single-unit detached house, and that way we don't have to keep kind of leading people into thinking it's a dwelling unit, I mean, I, by leaving it open-ended, I think it allows for some, you know, invites creativity and, and allows for things such as cottage houses, so it, it just kind of, it paints in our minds by constantly leading it with dwelling, you know, townhouses or accessory dwelling units. We have kind of these images that come to mind, so I would, you know, I just would propose that we, we take that out.
I'm a little uncomfortable with that creative, I mean, I'm all for creativity, innovation, right? But, but I wanted to make sure that people know that are parameters. Right, that it can't just be a doghouse that they go in.
Oh, no, the zone, the, the building permitting process in our zoning code will allow for it, but because, I mean, it's so, it's so specific, saying dwelling units duplexes, that's all, you know, that's, that's all that will come to mind, but I, you know, there, there are so many different ways that we can address some of these issues without always being cookie cutter, but our, you know, part of it too is, is, you know, us of the planning commission, this document expressing that we are innovative, that we are wanting something besides this cookie cutter stuff, is, is the the spirit of what I am trying to say, instead of, you know, those, those, those townhouses and the duplexes that we're seeing all over the place, that, that really is what comes to mind when I see that, and because it's, 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 it's coming up in three different sections in single-family residential, or it, it really is leading, because that is, and so that's why I would rather not have those images painted in our heads.
I get what you're saying about that.
Yeah, that's, but I, our zoning code, our building process will not allow for doghouses to be built.
That was just a certain example, but.
Oh, right, so I think I misunderstood something. I thought Commissioner Lee was saying that this phrase, alternatives to the single-family detached house, that the repetitive use of that was problematic, and she wanted to say innovative alternatives.
Correct, that is correct. I, but when we say such as, and we give the examples of what that qualifies as, then it really limits, you know, I think developers or I, I mean duplexes and townhomes, we all know what that looks like, but yeah, I, I just think it's a, it's a subtle way that we could say, you know, that we, we value innovation and that we do like creative, you know.
Let me make sure I understand. Are you saying that you have less of an issue, for example, with everything that's in this residential high block right here, your issue was what, is what, what's in parentheses?
Correct. But instead saying innovative alternative to family unit detached house, period.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any comments about that? So I've got David, I've got you registered as not be comfortable with that.
So I like the way that it's stated, because you know what zone is it? Because the townhome is not in the first zone. And so I kind, I kind of like it, like spelt out, and let people kind of like know that, you know, it has to be RS seven point two zoning for them to be able to do a townhome, because the other one the townhome, right, it's just, I mean, that's just duplexes. I like that et cetera in there, because it does allow for other things, right, right. So that's just my comment, is that I do like the fact that the zoning is spelt out to what you can do. That's kind of what our zoning code is. I believe our zoning coach spell these things out, but that's my personal belief, that I respect. But I, I, I think a lot of people don't know where to go to find out what the zoning code is, you know, I mean, I'm sure the builders will know, you know, but anyway, it seems like it's a little bit need this, this way, in my opinion.
Yeah, I thank you for that. What about, let's see, Sam or Melissa or Yanni? Do you, do you want to weigh in on this?
I mean, I think that the, I, I agree with Lois, and I think that the zoning thing could probably just, if, if there's confusion over it, I'm guessing this is going to live online, and it's all done, and there's going to be a hyper lake attached to like RS seven point two, so somebody can click on that, or like, like a hover bubble or something like that, and it can just sort of give you an idea of what that zoning entails, and I think that'd be, no one's going to print this out, read it, it's all going to be online.
And I'll, I'll chime in. I agree with Lois's comment that, you know, my concern would also be solved if we just deleted the parenthetical. So if we delete the parenthetical, I don't know if innovative alternatives is the right word. I appreciate the spirit of what it's trying to do, but I might suggest for permitted alternatives, knowing that the zoning code will specify the permitted denser housing types or middle housing types that are appropriate. And then, because I don't think this is, I don't think what lives in the comprehensive master plan is necessarily going to be kind of the primary source, the source of truth for interpreting what's allowed in a particular zone.
Okay, so we talked at, at the beginning of holding off on providing examples until we got more information on what our guidelines are going to be, and then this conversation is suggesting maybe we don't provide examples. I think we put a pin in this until we have a little more guidance and we can consider the implications. I tend to sort of fall in David's camp. I'm sorry, Yanni, did you have input before I weighed in?
No, I was going to say about what you said, which is, since we already decided we're gonna, we understand we're going to get more information about middle housing, I think we could put a pin in, you know, what examples do we include, because I can imagine we might recommend something other than just duplexes or ADUs, even in these.
Or townhomes, yeah, yeah, I agrees. Okay, so we're agreed that in terms of these definitions, there's probably, we need a little bit more guidance on, you know, what will be exempt from versus, you know, what will be required to include and can revisit, you know, the final language on this, once we have that guidance. Fair? Okay. I'm watching the clock. Did anybody have, so when we were talking about housing up top, that tackled that tackled everything to right here. In terms of neighborhood business and below, did anybody have any particular heartburn with the minor edits that were made in these sections? Anything discussion-worthy? In particular, I wondered about this low-density aspect of the southern gateway, if it needed to be aligned with the same type of definition that we were the way we're referring to low-density in this first designation for RS twenty and fifteen, or? Or does this shift?
I, I think, this is low, I think it would read better if it was low-density mixed use, that would make more sense.
I'll jump in on that. I, the, the thing about that, I, I did a walking tour of that whole area here recently to kind of get my eyes on southern gateway at a level of detail, and that, the entire transition in low-density zone was, has been newly developed in the past decade. So to me, and it is what it is right now, it's not mixed, it, it is all residential, it's actually quite attractive. But I just, you know, I don't, I wouldn't spend as much time on the low-density or the transition, because those, you know, those are a very limited area, and it's been done, it's all part of one development. The corridor is where there's a lot to be desired on, you know, the sub-area plan for the south, southern gateway, seeing that implemented more. So I wouldn't spend too much effort on the wording for low-density or transition. It's what, it is what it is for at least several decades, probably.
Okay. Thanks for that. It sounds like there isn't any substantial discussion or any heartburn over what Christina has proposed there, which means if you're ready, let's dive into page fifteen and consider the additions, and let me just pause for a minute while you remind yourself of this section. Look at your notes, and then I'll want to hear from anybody who has discussion-worthy comment.
I have just a typo, land use one point six, it should be connect, collaborate with all residents, blah, 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 and intentionally connect with people who
Instead of that, is this where you were? Sorry, I was just trying to catch up with where you were. Connect with people who have not.
So with that statement, what I'm trying to, trying to understand is, is this for future planning, or are we talking about our current comprehensive planning process?
It's a part of the equity concerning a little bit.
Right, but but what I'm confused by is, is, isn't this what we should be doing currently in this process, in this comprehensive planning process, right? And so what significance does this statement make? If, if, if we're not already doing that? If, if we're not already doing that in the process. Right? So. And I don't know how to replace this, the statement, but it's, I, I think it needs to be something stated. This, you know, it's our commitment to. Including, you know, inclusion, right? So. Yes, we're, do you know, similar saying is like, we're putting this in here, but do this right now.
Or about, yeah, something like a, a commitment to collaborate.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. You know, whatever activity that, that is, yeah.
Uh, is it, is it David, just instead of limiting it to the comp plan, um, the, you know. Um, common comprehensive planning and code development processes?
Maybe. Yeah, yeah. So if we did take.
Hmm, yeah.
I would actually take the word comprehensive out because I think what we're trying to set with this policy is an expectation that in kind of all. You know, all kind of planning that affects the community, we engage the community. And so the comprehensive plan. Part is just something that comes along every ten years. So I had the exact same comment. I'm like, I don't get the point of this. If it's limited to comp plan.
How about land use?
Yeah, so I could see one point six and one point seven could probably be blended. To get at this idea that a key policy is that whenever we're doing. You know, land use planning, whether it's comp plan or not. That then the rest of it looks really good. I, but I, I struggled with that same kind of, um, question. Thanks.
So I, I hear you saying collaborate with all residents during, uh, land use planning processes and intentionally connect with people, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep, something like that.
Okay. And then, um, I, I'd, I'd like to suggest we leave one point seven. I think it's an important distinct distinction. Any other comments about this section? This page? This, this one in particular, um, I don't know if anybody else had questions about it, but I, one thing that I'm aware of. Is kind of this ongoing question about whether or not, you know, we have. Um, appropriate infrastructure for, to accommodate. Uh, growth in our community and I don't know if that's a real issue or. Used to be and it isn't, isn't anymore and how, how we as planning commissioners consider. Um, or account for that if it is a, in fact, a true problem.
Through the chair, it's not a capacity issue, but as you go through time with the. Uh, urban, or urban growth report, um, buildable lands, it used to be called. Uh, and the concept of concurrency and the future land use map and the long term vision. It's important at every point to have the infrastructure to support the growth that's envisioned. And so policy statement like, uh, such as this. Brings the comprehensive plan to be consistent with the CPPs, uh, and GMA.
Okay. So I was looking at where we were with, um, pages. Anything else?
Just a quick question. Are the maps, maybe this is a question for Mark. Um, are the, will the maps be updated as well or will that be updated at a later date? Or are, are there thoughts just updating that?
Each, each graphic in the comprehensive plan should be updated. The, uh, future land use map or the comprehensive plan map would reflect any of the annual docketing. You know, uh, property specific or site specific. Uh, um, uh, changes that have been made. And then through time, that could be amended either annually by the property owner and so forth, but as, as part of this effort. A check will be made since twenty fifteen, what changes have been made and those exhibits should be updated.
Did that answer your question? Okay. Um, and I can't see Yanni at the same time I see the room. So if somebody has their hand up and I'm missing it, please just interrupt. Um. I, I. I think, well, I might have corrected that. Um, I have a question about a policy land use two point two in that is this. Um. Uh, an element, a policy element that, uh, we need to consider the, uh, climate action. Planning groups work in that I see walkable was struck, um, and there isn't really anything about this being an important. Um. Uh. Aspect of being a climate resilient community that we are walkable and can have. Um, it's not just about connecting to local and regional transit options. It's also about having the ability to move through the community without the use of. Motorized vehicles. Or carbon emitting, do we? Do any of you feel so moved right now to account for some of the other reasoning for this policy? Besides connecting to transit?
I guess I read it differently. I see it as saying pedestrian environment that is barrier free. And that connects to residential neighborhoods, businesses. So I, I'm guessing the walkable was struck because the word. High quality pedestrian is in the beginning. Um, so I guess I read it a little bit differently than you. I didn't have an issue with it.
Okay.
Did you want to keep walkable, Maddie?
Um, I, I was thinking more in terms of, uh, whether or not, and, and not, not having seen. Um, their report or not having reviewed it, um, I just actually received it right before I went out of town last week. Um. Just trying to think about where some of their language, you know, fits in. And so I was thinking more about. About that. We can, we can come back to this. Um, I'll just make a note for myself to look for. Um, alignment, um.
Maddie, one other thought. Christina may have been thinking, um, that reliance on pedestrian instead of walkable is a more inclusive term. Since walkable is.
I, you're right. You're totally right. Thank you for, for bringing that forward. That's, that's right. Okay. Uh. Anything else on page fifteen before we move on? Going once, going twice. Welcome, Meredith.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm late.
Not a problem. We are just starting page sixteen. Um, and what we're doing is just moving through here and looking for, you know, any, uh. Looking through each section to look for anything that's discussion worthy, um, where. We'd hope to keep to about a half an hour, um, per section, but. We're all over here on land use, which I think is probably appropriate because it's a pretty long section. So we'll keep going, uh, any comments on land use two point four? All right, let's go on to page seventeen.
Maddie, I had a comment about a couple of the policies on this page and just a general one from. Discussion or maybe we revisit, but there's a lot of use and. This is maybe my ignorance, but there's a lot of use about terminology like promote development, encourage development. Like, but it seems like at times, especially in this environmental quality section. That that might be a tension with meeting environmental goals when preservation can also achieve some of our policy goals. So I wonder if there are parts where instead of we say promote development. We could say promote development and preservation. Uh, that, da, 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 da. Um, or does the comprehensive master plan need to be exclusively focused on development?
Uh, were you on page sixteen?
I was on page seventeen where I made that.
Thirteen.
And so like I was looking, I put the. L U dash three compatibility with natural environment, promote designs and development that, da, 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 da. But there's a couple of other places where that kind of verbiage shows up.
I see.
So it kind of makes me wonder like there specifically, could we say promote designs, development and conservation? Or and preservation that respects and conserves the natural environment? Because there may be places, and I know we've talked about it in prior meetings, how. You know, there's an affordable home and it gets bought up by a developer and they tear it down and they replace it with a one point five million dollar home. Suddenly it's not an affordable home. There might be policies that the city could be promoting that. You know, promote keeping, you know, a family, you know. In the community in a home that, you know, they can afford. And so development and always looking through the lens of development and promoting development. Isn't necessarily the policy we should be promoting across the board.
Right. I mean, what you're kind of getting at is, is promoting diversity of housing or, uh, promoting equity and housing policy. Not just conservation of natural environment.
Yeah, so that's why I think it, it's kind of broader than this point. This is where it jumped out to me, but. I mean, I wonder if, if others feel that way and if that's something we ought to maybe have Christina's input on and maybe another gloss over of everything. To work that in where we can.
And I wonder also if there are odds. You know, if these are competing commitments.
Yeah.
And how are we going to deal with those competing commitments?
I, I wonder too, let's see, we get to historic preservation. I mean, it is, th- this section that, uh, three. Is, is about, um. The natural environment and I was just thinking like. A big piece of what you're getting at, I think, has to do with, you know, up above our discussion pieces is how is equity sort of conserved? Um, or promoted. Um, and so I just wonder if, if this, if there's a section where that fits, you know, like. Do, do we want to consider equity throughout each, you know, these specific sections? Like the natural environment or do we want to put that somewhere else? So it's a, it's this and something else. If I understand your point, Sam.
Yeah, it's a good question and Christina had posed at the beginning. You know, there's five discussion topics. The next one was on equity and she had suggested. If we have a standalone equity section, so I could absolutely see it being there too, because it'd be. You know, that could be one of the policy goals in connection with equity because it could have equity outcomes. Um, I don't know if it needs to be exclusively there, but, um, it's something I want us to think about as we look through these various sections.
I mean, this is, yeah, please.
Talking about, um, so we are talking about the intersection between our environmental protection and our climate action. Because climate action isn't just building density and getting people out of their cars. It's preserving. The green, um, that helps mitigate for. The remaining impacts. And so we're, we're actually thinking about, I think they used to call it ecosystem services. But they don't call it that anymore, but we're, 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 we're actively discussing and I think it will be a topic in our retreat. Of how conservation of the tree can be the critical spaces and so forth as a climate action. Fits together, um, and so I don't think I have any guidance, but I just want to flag. That, that we, I think as a council, we feel strongly that climate action isn't just about regulating emissions and vehicles. So.
Try, agreed.
Greenery, uh, so anyway. So that's helpful to, because it seems relevant to what you're saying.
So I also wondered in this conversation, is there a difference between conservation and preservation? In terms of how we're dealing with. And if you go fundamentally, that's maybe the question that you're all dealing with, with the council group. That's my member probably. Is that there's, there's a lot of philosophical questions here, right?
There are, but I, I leave the recommendations, love that to you.
Um. Can we? Can we flag this? I'm gonna. Elijah, we just lost somebody. Sam, can we flag this and, and come back to it? As we move through the rest of this, just to see if there's a place that further on that addresses. Your point, which I think is a good one and I don't want to lose it, but just to search for maybe another section, it. May seem more.
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, okay. All right. Yes.
Well. Um. You guys might have already talked about this, but, um, just it came up, so I'll, I'll bring it up. So it's one thing that I wanted to talk about was that. I, I would prefer the term of quality to equity. I think that it is more in keeping. The original goals of our, of our country and, um, you know, all men are created equal. And, uh, I, I think that that is a. Word that. It's what I was, you know, what I think government should be shooting for. All in the law, quality of the. All women can equally.
I like that.
Does anybody else want to weigh in on that at all? Uh, Yanni.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the sort of the. Spirit of the, of the remark and. Um. Having been through a whole lot of, um. Equity, uh, focused training and so forth. They really are different things and I think the countywide planning policies and what the state is saying. Um. The use of the word is very deliberate because they are different things. And equity being about having equitable access regardless of your starting point, whereas equality tends to be about sort of equal treatment. Regardless of where you're coming from and what your, sort of where, what your starting point is. And I, I'm not saying that to. Deliberate. I'm, I'm saying there's a very specific. Background to the word equity that is in why it's front and center in the state and countywide planning policy guidance and so forth and not. The term equality. So I would just. I think it's a good point of discussion, but I would just be cautious about thinking we could just swap it out because it is a different term. Thanks.
Um, I think if it's okay with you, so we don't get bogged down with that, I, uh, your point is taken, um. Both of your points are taken and I think that, um, it. It's something that I would like to, um, I'd like to come back to. Yanni's exactly right and, uh, we may have some compliance. Um, issues related to that. So before we unpack that. Uh, would that be, would you be okay with that, Meredith? If we took that up on, on another conversation? Okay. Um. So make sure I have my notes there. All right. Any other, um, discussion around the bottom of page seventeen? Uh, let's see, Mark.
Uh, no comments, but just, uh, because you requested at the beginning, just a timekeeping note, it's eight o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I know I was scrolled down to the bottom and see we have quite a bit yet to go. Um. So we'll be revisiting this on Tuesday. If you feel like, uh, something passed you by, um, please email me or, um. Email me if it's a large item. Um, if it's a small item, we can always, um. Uh, hit it on Tuesday. Okay, uh, we're down into policy, uh, four. Let's see, did I skip past that? Um, I did. Residential neighborhoods, um.
Uh, the, just, just for, you know, the goal LU three, shouldn't it be LU four just for, uh?
Yes, this is right. Okay, um. Sorry, I'm just reminding myself. I didn't have any notes on this section, so I just wanted to make sure I wasn't skipping past anything. Um, all right, page eighteen. Does anybody have notes where they wanted to talk about any of these edits or, uh, additions?
Yeah, I, I had one, um, it's Lois, um.
Hi.
Uh, just kind of in terms of, uh, the higher debt. Land use four point four is kind of where I'm looking at and then further down again in land use six point three on page eighteen. Um, I was wondering if there's a way that we could tie in the canopy plan that we have. Uh, if you look at the canopy map. That's, uh, southern gateway, that corridor. that's Southern Gateway, that corridor is completely devoid of vegetation and canopy, uh, a tree growth in that area. It would be nice if if our cop plan, uh, could express to see more, uh, you know, you know, expansion of the canopy and that those areas in high urban areas as well. Again, that's section, uh, page eighteen, land use policy four point four. And I saw another section, land use policy six point three, where something to that effect could be added.
So those are, I appreciate. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead, David.
I was just gonna say, in addition to that, there's other ways of greening communities, right? Um, there's lots of cities, Singapore, that's experimenting, you know, they're not just planting trees, but they're creating buildings that are very era, you know, that have plants growing from the the trees. I don't know what that that's called, but there's other ways. Because we can't necessarily expand a canopy, a tree canopy in certain areas where it's already built out. Necessarily, but there's other ways of greening those areas.
I guess if you look right, but my desire is to see some commitment of green, greenifying most urban parts of our
Yeah.
And really, if we could even further that by saying, uh, along high traffic corridors within city jurisdictions such as SR five twenty two. I think that would be a nice place to really echo that.
So you're wanting to see that in four? I'm I'm wondering before I come off of this page, if if in three point two, LU three point two, if canopy, should it be listed as one of the items in this list of things, cluster of trees, slopes, open spaces? Lois.
By design flexibility to conserve design flexibility. Oh, it's actually to expand the, you know, the canopy, the greens, the urban, uh, you know, the urban environment that we have along the southern gateway.
Sure. Okay, so I'm trying to distinguish that your your desire for canopy to be called out and then to expand green spaces.
I use that canopy because if you look at the canopy plan, which the city, uh, created and adapted in 2010, it talks about, um, expanding the canopy to the urban areas. And I thought this would be a nice way to uh, and Dave pointed out, Commissioner Dave pointed out that, uh, it might not be feasible to expand the canopy. But green, you know, turning it into a greener, uh, urban area would be, you know, more appropriate, which is fine too.
But just to express the commitment is there, right?
Correct. I would like to see some sort of some sort of language that uh, because the southern gateway is so urban and is 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 really there's there is very little vegetation in that area. And again,
I guess.
Yeah.
I understand your intent. Um, I'm what I'm asking is under the compatibility with the natural environment. If if we modified LU three point two uh, to provide flexibility to, it says, uh, to conserve existing um, site features, would we want to conserve and expand? Or or do you want it in a completely different section? I was just thinking it sounded like your recommendation fit very squarely in natural environment.
I I would be happy to see it there too. Yeah, just anywhere in the document. In that urban growth corridor, that urban corridor that we have. I chose, uh, I chose page eighteen because that's where you do see that, uh, you know, the land use element regarding, um, the higher density development area, which we all know is is that, um, five twenty, the SR five twenty two area there.
Um, if for four point four, and I haven't scrolled down to the six point piece, do you have a recommended edit here?
Uh, I will take, I would love to take suggestions.
How about we put that, uh, Lois, um, that you will, if if you can give that some thought about what it is you're trying to accomplish, if somebody doesn't have a suggestion right now that you bring that to our Tuesday's meeting? Does that work for you? I can't see the room right now.
Yeah, I think Lois said.
Yes, that works. Yes, that works fine. Yes.
Okay, super. Okay, thank you for pointing that out. When we get down to section six, will you bring that back up, please?
Matt, if I could just back up just real quickly, just put a pin in if you have to have a about this, uh, three point two clusters of trees. What I'd like to do is go back to the tree board. Um, there's a more scientific term, a stand of trees has much more significance to it, and I'll come back to what that means.
Okay. Okay, thanks a bunch, David. Okay. Any other comments, discussion worthy comments for page eighteen? Anything that gave anyone heartburn or saw missed opportunity? Okay, see, go ahead.
I would like to, um, I I noticed that uh, character has been turned, has been replaced with form in a lot of the areas, and I would just like to hear a reason why that happened. Like, I I liked character, so I I would like to hear why form replaced it in a lot of places. Explanation. So that would be, uh, it's quite a few places.
Everywhere.
Yeah. So for example, uh, policy LU four point three, identify underused land and encourage infill development that is compatible with scale and form instead of scale and character of surrounding development. But there are lots of other places.
Uh, Mark, thank you. As a point of procedure, um, is uh, should I consolidate some of these notes that I've been taking into feedback for Christina for next Tuesday, or is that something that you and Nick are prepared to do?
I I think one source is preferred where we're going to update her on the flavor of the conversation, but not produce a revision or responses between now and Tuesday. So your set of notes are the most detailed.
Okay, so maybe I should send them to you. So it's one communication.
That would work.
Okay, thank you. And Yanni, you have your handout.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to Meredith's, uh, point. I I and again, I'm I'm kind of inferring what I think the reason there is, which is that the term character is often also very much thought of as in the eye of the beholder. And what is, you know, what is the character of this neighborhood? Is it good character or bad character? So I think the idea is to move the terms that are more objective and less subjective. And and again, I'm I'm just saying that I believe that's the intent of removing the word character, because it's I'm sure is a hard thing to really define. Um, especially if you're asking, say, a really diverse group of people to define the character of a particular neighborhood. You'll get a very different answer than if you just ask, you know, a really small homogeneous group of people what the character of a town or a neighborhood is. So I think that's what that's for. We can certainly ask, um, our consultants, you know, maybe there's some guidance that's come out of some of the model, uh, model work on that as well.
Thank you, Yanni.
Like, I don't know what form means. My feet farm.
Uh, I mean, Mark, you probably would be the best one to answer it, but I my understanding is are it they're the definitions that we've worked with for some time setbacks, height restrictions. Um, you know, the the sort of space uh, that a structure takes up.
And and not being here for the actual edit, I would appreciate her feedback and her intent. So I like that part. But for me, what Yanni specified in general, as a planner, form is more objective. Community character is eye of the beholder and very hard to explain. And you know, when you see it and everyone has a different view of it.
So just a comment about age eleven. Uh, there's a guiding question from the consultant on residential neighborhoods. She says, discuss character defining features of neighborhoods beyond scale and form. What makes LFP's neighborhoods unique and charming places to live? So she is addressing that, but I think she's bringing it back on us. It seems.
And does anybody have a comment on that? I'm thinking, Meredith, would you want to take a pass at how you would? On what makes LFP's neighborhoods unique and charming?
Well, I just, I just don't see the reason why we get why we're black and red of the word character, because I don't think that it or yeah, so to say like our um, I don't think that form has the the same encompassing, you know, it doesn't encompass the same
Yeah, I I totally agreed. I think that's why it got flagged as one of five questions. And so to that end, it looks like the current recommendation is to move to form, which we can, we can have Christina describe a little bit more, but it appears that she probably took that this, you know, that designation into consideration and is looking for where form isn't enough by asking us what makes LFP's neighborhoods unique and charming places to live. And so I think if we can unpack that for just a minute, um, that might be helpful input um, to figure out whether form is adequate or whether something important has been lost to your point.
I I can I suggest reading that vision statement at the the introduction of the the cop plan. There's a very nice, I know, uh, description of what I I guess it kind of answers this question that I can relate to, and I've always identified that I with that introduction of, I was the character and form. I I've always liked it myself.
I don't have it in front of me, um, but I will see if I can pull it up. Uh, let's see if this is shared. Let me. So is this what you're talking about, Lois?
There's, yeah, there's an introduction to the cop plan, the the actual introduction.
Oh, I thought you were saying, sorry, I I was off track. I thought it was our vision document.
Here I have it. I could read it, Matty.
Sure, that'd be great.
Exactly, yes.
In 2035, our balanced approach to environmental preservation, economic vitality, and attractive residential character has loved Lake Forest Park to flourish. We've preserved and enhanced our natural environment and unique residential neighborhoods as defining features of our city. We're welcoming an inclusive community enriched by diverse cultures and perspectives. A vibrant town center district is the cultural heart of our community and together with other neighborhood centers fosters a resilient economy and provides a diversity of shopping and entertainment opportunities that appeal to all ages. Our neighborhoods are safe and connected to each other and to community gathering places by well-designed paths, sidewalks, and bike lanes. Our legacy of collaboration with neighboring jurisdictions has inspired solutions to our regional needs and issues. And I just to echo that, I kind of agree with Lois. Maybe we could refer Christina to that for, you know, some of the characteristics that define the character or form that seems appealing to many of us.
Great. Okay, let's see, uh, who else? Shari or Melissa? Uh, David, Yanni, does anybody else want to build on that? So I mean, would you agree or disagree, or does this warrant more conversation? Do we generally agree with that statement that was read? Answers this question.
Yes, I agree with it.
Okay, Meredith, does it does it get at some of what you think, um, character was getting at in originally? Sorry, I think you broke up for me. Did you say sure? Okay, thanks. Sorry. Some of it, some of the feedback is a little choppy. Okay, I feel like I'm doing a really bad job managing our time, but we're making progress. We were on eighteen, I think. Is that right?
I think we're back to six point three.
Six point three, here we go. Thank you, Mark. Okay, I, was there anything, uh, any other commentary at the end of page eighteen here?
This is, this is where I thought, here, I guess I like the street greening, the language of street greening projects and
In which point?
Six three, this is really where I felt that, uh, you know, a nod to SR five twenty two, because it is so uh, not green, uh, if we can also say something along the lines of, um, public rights of way, comma, especially along high traffic corridors within city jurisdictions such as SR five twenty two.
So instead of just simply streetscape improvements being, uh, referring to wayfinding signs, lighting, public art. Like, do you want to build out this enhanced landscaping further or or do you still, is this, is this another section that you would like to bring back suggested language?
You know, uh, this, it just popped into mind, the SR five twenty two really popped into my mind at this point, and maybe we could add it as uh, such as, you know, as an example, at the very end of it, after public rights of way, I had written it out as especially along high traffic corridors within the city. Such as SR five twenty two.
Okay. Does everybody agree with that? I mean, do you like that expansion?
Uh, yeah, I'm not, I I guess I'm not sure about the intent of the original policy, so I'm a little bit unclear on whether I'd want to clarify. I I I don't disagree with Lois's intent in her comment. I'm just, I was kind of scratching my head at this this policy to begin with, so not really sure if I want to change it before understanding it better.
Right. I mean, it appears here that it's tied in part to our hundred year vision plan, this street greening. So but I mean, it does look like it, it combines it with other, you know, elements that again get very much at character. Do we want to discuss this more or is this sufficient? Some of this stuff feels a little mushy, right? Because we ultimately have to develop ordinances around it. So it feels more like a a placeholder to say, we need to do something to sort of improve the character um, and the greening of key card corridors and rights of way, you know, throughout our community, right?
We are, we are in dire need of this unless we can start giving people reflector vests. I mean, this is to me, this is such a critical part of what is glaringly missing in our city. For as developed as of a city as we are, the fact that we have no apprehensive walkable, we are not a walkable city. So if you Uprehensive walkable, we are not a walkable city. So if you, and this is such, I, I really feel very strongly that this must be in our. Our comp plan and we should see it all over the place, the city, the school district, the kids, the school district that identify. Safe streets as a very important and, and we, I don't see sidewalks at all, except for just a couple parts here. We used it. You know, we've gone away with walkways, we've gotten away with pedestrian, right? But we, we, we really must bring this front and center to, to the city.
So when you say this, what are we talking?
Sidewalks, pedestrians, they're talking about multi-mole transportation that is not car dominated. That provides, but we need to talk about it, streetscape improvements. What, I mean. I like the language in here, but, but really bringing sidewalks again.
Sidewalks and crossings.
Crossings, if you, street signs, street, street calming, all of this to create.
Mark, is it performed to refer to another document that's already just sort of details? You know, in a comprehensive way, our, our shared interests, like, you know, would it be sufficient to? Reference safe streets here, you know, and to prioritize. Pedestrian access, you know, as detailed and safe streets is that?
It's a good at the point. In my opinion, you don't want this document to be too expansive. So where you have redundancy or you can refer or adopt other documents by reference, that's the preference. You don't need it in two places.
Okay, so, so it may be appropriate simply to reference safe streets.
If, yeah, exactly. If it's a adopted program, master plan, so forth, that is at a policy level. It can be referred to or adopted by reference in this document.
Uh, Lois, do you feel like that would be in addition that would help? Anybody else have any comment about that, Yanni?
Yeah, and this might be a question from Mark, you know, for, for the, since Lois is talking partly about SR five twenty-two. You know, there is the Southern Gateway Subarea Plan, that thing exists. So how, how do we think about that plan? In the context of any changes or suggestions or whatever that we do here? Cause it, it lives, it has a lot of cool stuff in it. I think it's from about twenty eleven, twenty twelve. A lot of thought was put into things like, and I haven't read the whole thing, but a lot of thought was put into things like trees and how to make it a really vibrant area. It hasn't happened really. But can you just speak to how we should be thinking about a subarea plan that exists? Whether that's Town Center or, or Southern Gateway and what our role is with the comp plan.
In, in general, they're updated at different times for different purposes. So if you are currently updating your, your comprehensive plan. Periodic update, you can include policies and then implementation or action items that. Influence or inform and future update of another subarea plan. But they exist together and so you could not update that plan here. But it could definitely lead to a relook right now in the comprehensive plan. That calls for a certain relook at a subarea plan.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm. Going to do sort of a last, uh, last offer for any discussion items on section, any section in Land Use Seven. Looking around for hands. I know we're trying to cover a lot of ground tonight. Land Use Eight. Any concerns over the edits to historic preservation?
I'm sorry, Maddie, just to go back to the seven, maybe this would be, I agree with Lois that I think that, you know, sidewalks. I think that that should be the. We do have it in the comp plan that would be so like seven point three. Sorry, many, uh, school, yeah, the support safe bicycling routes to school. So the, the promotion of. Things like sidewalks and safe walking passes in the comp plan. Maybe, Lois, what we can do is after this is all said and done, we can say, okay, well, hopefully as a comprehensive plan, work on. Getting it from there to something more actionable or, or, you know. But maybe it needs to go in there more as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really a financial question. I, I, you know, and I feel so strongly that our city needs, we are. Single-family residential, this does not produce any amount of significant funding for the city, period. It's, I mean, property taxes, as you know, is, is the greatest source of funding. I, I, you know, it's, and it's small. It's, it's small. It's a really, it's a compliment. I just want to, this to me is just saying what's important to, to up in the city and. So I want to screen sidewalks and safe streets. I, I just, that's actually what. Anyways, I don't want to take up too much time, but yes.
Yeah, I think we should, I think we should move on. I think we're all in agreement. I think that we've identified some ways to underscore that. And you're right, some of that is, is very much, you know, in an ordinance level and a funding level sort of. Status, you know, issues with those. Historic preservation, any? I'm just being mindful of time, and unless you're having serious heartburn on something, I want to like save our time for. Issues that. That need more discussion. So I don't see any comments for section eight. Section nine, Land Use Nine, Regional Issues.
Just a quick one, I think SR five twenty-two and again here, greening of the streets should be placed. And we can refer our, we can refer to our other documents such as the Southern Gateway document or the. The canopy documents, we can refer to those that we would like to actually have with interagency cooperation. You know, also a compliance with those, those documents.
I'm sorry, Laura, Lois, again, nine.
Nine point, oh, one, yeah, nine point, excuse me, two. Yeah, specifically.
I was, I, I think what you're, it sounds like kind of what you're getting at is the way we've kind of gotten the middle finger from Sound Transit on some of our environmental priorities.
This is our priority document. I scream very loud.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Land Use Ten Equity.
Uh, just on, sorry, I had my hand up for.
Oh, sure. I'm so sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. And maybe this is for Mark. I just, you know, we've got, they've marked up a bunch of these as this is an implementation action. And I'm fine with that, which, which implies it lives somewhere else. So can you, or that it should perhaps live somewhere else. So can you just give us some guidance on where things like that maybe should live if, if not here?
I've, I've seen both. I've seen each element have implementation items and I've also seen a separate chapter or element that contains all the implementation. Items. I've yet to see a plan that I've worked with that had them in both.
Okay, so.
I think it's a choice of the commission. Having it separate in its own identified chapter then really calls them out as a group.
And this is question number four that Christina has for us at the beginning of the second.
Ah, thanks.
I was listening for an action there. Yanni, did, is there a, a note we need to? Convey to Christina. Wait, where did my questions come?
Well, it just sounds like we have a few options and I, I maybe we could talk about the pluses and minuses. Sounds like. Mark might have some ideas and Christina might as well. I just, she's flagged a lot of them, so I'd like to start thinking, okay, where do we want these? Do we want a separate chapter where we list under each policy, a bunch of potential implementation actions? Or do we want to, you know, fold them in here? So just really, it's an organizational thing that I'm trying to get my mind wrapped around. Not that important for tonight. Just figure we need to decide at some point.
And. Are you, how are you distinguish distinguishing implementation versus policy? Were you referring to a particular item here?
I mean, for me, I'm looking at the ones she's picked out are ones that. Kind of have an affirmative action verb like develop corridor plans for five twenty-two. Whereas most of the policies have, you know, encourage facilitate. Things like that. So I think it's about specificity and about action. Like a specific action. So that's, I guess that's the kind of the breakpoint. I don't, I don't know if that's the only way to do it, but I, that seems to be the thread that I see in common through these.
And I think SCJ or Christine went through vision, mission, got. Policy, action items, so forth. It is that specificity in the words you choose. If you really want to hi- highlight that this is a living, working document that will result in certain actions. That collection of implementation items or the calling out kind of gives the tone of how frequently or, you know, what. Short, medium and long term kind of gives a prioritization of, of where to go from adoption of the plan.
Okay, um, well, we have, what do we have? A few pages to go.
So Maddie, I'd just like to make one comment about.
Yeah.
And we don't have, we have a competition later, which I think will come up again. Because I think your consultants referring to this bit, the correlation through equity and climate change policy. Going back to your point, Lois, you know, that there are certain areas of the city that have canopy. I know that our neighborhood is five degrees lower than some of those areas and we're talking about. You know, equity in terms of how people, the environment, what that means to, to unequal.
Hundred percent.
Experiences of living. So I just want to point that out that I want to explore that further.
Like who within the community is having? Is, is being more profoundly impacted and how there, how that can be mitigated?
And what?
Is that your point?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry. Is that, was that your point? I just want to make sure I understood it.
Just Maddie, that's fine.
Having consideration in this section to this.
Yes. That correlation. Also addressed.
Okay. I was the, and, and I'm sorry, David, this is just a lack of being able to hear clearly some of the discussion in the room, but. Would you, are, are, would you say then that in terms of LU ten and LU eleven, these are things that, these are sections that we want to build out? Is that? It seems like that was one of the.
Keeping, keeping that in mind, being the, the connection between equity and, and climate change or whatever we're referring to in terms of environment.
Okay, so where, again, if I'm not hearing you right, we're in favor of a LU ten and an LU eleven section that we need to build out further? I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear anything.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I mean, I kind of thought I saw you not, I can hear when you said that. Okay. Thank you for that. I, I thought that was an important point to make sure I understood properly. Okay. Any other discussion for? You know, through Land Use Eleven.
I guess, Maddie, the, the question is, how do we feel about Christina's proposal for the content for LU ten? Which he has as discussion question number two. She's proposed specific language for LU ten.
Let's look at it together. I guess scrolled right past it, didn't I? So I would, I would ask, ask you all, what, what do you think about this? What did she get right? What's missing? Yanni?
Uh, my first reaction is I, I'm pretty good. I'm pretty good with the proposal, the, which might look like this, that what's on the screen right now. I mean, I'm, maybe there's a wordsmith thing to be done. Maybe there's a gap, but my initial reaction is positive.
Maddie, this is Sam. I was gonna agree, but just note the minor edit and. The third one where it says encourage non-motorized in transit, maybe we could add in pedestrian, encourage pedestrian, non-motorized in transit. Which gets to the points we've been talking about earlier.
Thank you. That's a good catch.
I would just again say that I, I would love to see the word equality, promoting equality and planning development processes. And I mean, I just love to collaborate with all the residents because. If that's exactly what I would want is that every single resident feels welcome to the, the planning process and. I just think that. Everyone should be welcome. I, 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 and I think that's enough.
Could, could we have both words, promote equity and equality? Would that kind of address all the distinctions?
No, no, I, I mean, that wouldn't, I mean, I understand that, that. I, I don't think that they mean the same thing.
Right, so equity would be more distribution of resources, but equality is that right for everybody to have?
And keep in mind, we don't have to resolve all of these things. We have a lot of ground to cover and we certainly have not reached the goal tonight. And it may have been too ambitious to begin with. But some of these things that come up, like in this case, Meredith, we may decide that it's, it's. Bigger than what we want to tackle and it's beyond our purview and that we, we can flag these types of things for. Counsel to pick up and, you know, to allow us to stay focused on, you know, getting through the comp plan updates and where. We haven't been able to adequately wrestle with the pros and cons of, of using equality versus equity. I, I just don't want you to feel like it's not been heard as much as, you know. I'm going to do my best to guide us to finishing our work and if we're able to come back to these kinds of things and wrestle with them. We will, and if not, we can certainly flag them. Okay, that puts us down to. And, and please speak up if I've skipped past something where you had a comment, but otherwise that brings us to page twenty. It, there are, I don't see substantial edits here that probably weren't discussion, but I'll leave that for you to decide for yourself. Speak up if you have any comments on page twenty or on twenty-one.
We're at land capacity. I have one note to add.
Okay, all right.
You're, you're down there. Back to that map, just below the map.
Yes, sorry, I was, I was reading ahead while I was waiting to see if anybody had comments.
Just after growth targets. So you see reference to the twenty twenty-one King County Buildable Lands Report. That's, you, you know, through time, that's what as a practice we've all called it. But now it's actually called the twenty twenty-one Urban Growth Capacity. But now it's actually called the twenty twenty-one Urban Growth Capacity Report. Just so they could change terms on us. The why I don't know, but I think this section needs to at least have a narrative or a discussion with a proper name. But the structures there and the, the backgrounds there that I, I don't think it's explained elsewhere. And then a correction, if I could channel my inner attorney, I think I said adopt by reference earlier, that would be at the development code level. I think the word that I need to use for policy level is incorporate.
And where, where is this? Sorry.
No, just in general. So when I'm talking about when you mentioned other reports and sources incorporate by reference.
Okay. I didn't hear anybody having comments on the previous pages. I'll move us into growth targets and land capacity. Not sure that there's much to say about this, Yanni. I don't, you may have a, a different point of view, given your exposure.
Nope, not on this section. Thank you.
Okay. Seems like there's not a lot to say about these things. They seem pretty administrative. Same with page twenty-five. I'm just gonna keep, if I'm going too fast, like speak up and just say, slow down. Twenty-six seems pretty, uh, I guess on twenty-six, we need to potentially, let me make a note, update based on terms at the beginning. This is, these are just janky notes from me of doc. These will just need edits to reflect if, if Christina doesn't see an issue with our recommendations to update this page and then.
Pause real quick.
Yeah.
Back on Southern Gateway, kind of in that, one of those. Yeah, somewhere in here. I think overall, I think in a few of these sections where there's reference to this Southern Gateway Plan and all that. And this is partly related to why I was asking Mark about the relationship between the comp plan and those plans is that I, you know, as I said, I did a kind of a pretty long kind of walking tour exploration with some, with some other residents to kind of get our arms around what's going on in Southern Gateway. And I think it would, you know, in some manner in this comp plan, we should probably acknowledge that on the, the commercial and the street frontage side, basically nothing has happened pursuant to that plan. So what's missing? Like there, there's something, either the incentives are wrong, uh, something's going on. The, you know, the, the, the single family, the Southern Gateway Single Family in transition, you know, attracted a nice, you know, nice big development. Looks good. It's, looks like it's full, you know, very pleasant. And nothing on the street frontage. So I just think that maybe somewhere in this comp plan, we should be directing some attention to the need to really look more closely at the specific things in the Southern Gateway Plan that are causing nothing to happen in the newly zoned area or the thing, the areas that were rezoned through that sub area plan.
Yeah, I do. I think you have a point. I think there is some backstory on part of that corridor. And then you and I talked before too, there is a parcel there that has a, I don't know if it's exactly shovel ready, but development proposed that was on the market. That I had showed you. And I think that you know, it may be reaching out to that particular landowner to find out, you know, what some of their real experiences are for them, because I think it's really hard to say for like Taco Bell and the the nightclub and the, uh, what's the, is it the dialysis center?
Yeah. But then there's also, you know, where Davy Tree is and the barbecue place and, and across the street where you've got Mr. Green's Pot Shop and whatnot. Like there could be so much more and better in those areas.
Yeah.
So anyway, I just wanted to flag that it seems like it's been over, over ten years. So Mike deserves some attention from us in this plan.
Great. I'll be glad to do a walking tour to the barbecue place and ask questions with you. Okay, we are at the end of the land use section. I will assemble some notes and make sure that those are available to Mark to share as he wishes with Christina. We obviously are not equipped, have time to tackle these other two sections. And I am optimistic that at our meeting next Tuesday, we can move through these and as, unless you have a better idea, I'm always open to, to better ideas. We can move through these sections in sort of a similar manner. If you will come having flagged anything that you have, you know, minor changes that we can, you know, quickly insert and move on or items that you really, really want to discuss, we'll go through in the same fashion. And if you're ready with the, with your thoughts, I'm optimistic that we can tackle these two sections in pretty short order with the caveat that until we see the Climate Action Planning Committee's report, you know, this may be something we want to circle back to, to incorporate some of their language into, into these sections where we don't have visibility right now. Does that seem sound to anybody or do you have comments on this process or?
I guess, Matty, one question is, I love the idea. Is there anything else we can do to help like, you know, pre sending in, you know, verbiage changes that they're kind of shovel ready when we meet or, you know, circulating comments in advance? Or is that going to be too much to kind of keep track of?
Well, I, I don't know procedurally, Mark, if this is allowed, but I would be glad to receive markups and consolidate them for Christina in order to save her from having to go through, you know, eight different documents. Is that allowed?
It is allowed to, as, as a tool through the chair to get that consensus and then to facilitate a meeting, it is allowed. It's legislative. It's not quasi judicial, but the, the work of the group should be done in the light of day or the dark of night.
Right.
You know, so the coalescing to facilitate the meeting is proper.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm, I'm super glad. I mean, I'm glad to pass it off to you, Mark, and I'm glad to pass it off to Christina, but I just thinking the quick turnaround. Sam, to your point, if any of you are ready with your notes before the end of the week, you know, or I would say maybe before the end of the day on Sunday, if you would like to send them only to me because we can't have an email thread with all of us on it, I don't think. I would be glad to collapse those into, you know, one document with feedback and get that to Christina in advance of the meeting so that we can focus our time on discussion items. But is, is that something that you would all have the time to do or interest in doing?
Yeah, I would. Thanks, Matty, for doing that. That's really.
Sure. It would at least help us flag where we just have edits versus discussion. So. Okay. Yeah. If you'll email me this document sort of marked up with comments and or edits, I'll do that. Okay. Mindful of the fact that we have eight minutes and this is already an extra meeting for you. And not wanting to keep you a minute longer. Let me go to our agenda. So I'm following the rules. Any reports or announcements? And public comments? I think we've lost everybody but you, Julian.
Well, then I feel obligated. I, I really commend this group for how you operate and the intelligence of all the comments and suggestions. That's pretty inspiring. So I think it's all in good hands and I should just go home, go home, go to bed. But there were some things that caught my eye kind of in passing and I just kind of ticked these off. Early in the document that you're reviewing today, figure one point two is a map of land use. And it's interesting to me that parks are inconsistently noted in that map. The newest park Whispering Willow shows up, but the older parks like Grace Cole and Five Acre Woods do not. So I think maybe that's the map that's going to get updated that Mark was talking about, but I do notice inconsistencies there.
This map?
That map, yeah.
And as far as GIS and graphic, two different distinct categories. Any errors or labeling or typos? Clarifications are fair game. Whole cell changing of the land use designation as it applies to specific areas of property is a whole different category.
Right. And I know that zoning is one map and reality is a different map. And I'm just saying that since some parks show up, all parks should show up.
But it's a kind of, to your point, Julian, it's kind of interesting, like some of the parks show up as public facilities and some show up as uh, what color is that? Recreation open spaces.
Color. Yeah. Right. And I just think all the parks ought to be treated the same and be noted, will be seen.
I see. Okay. Thank you. Did you have any other comments for us before we?
Oh, I just. Just, uh, the, the LU one point nine about infrastructure. I was very glad to see that. But I think in Lake Forest Park, stormwater management needs to be called out especially. Know this is an issue on the proposed development behind the Sheraton Market. Because they originally proposed connecting to the city's stormwater utility. Well, there isn't one. There is a ditch that overflows when it floods, when it rains. And so there's no capacity in the city infrastructure for that project. So I'm sure that can be worked out in various ways, but it usually requires retention and slow release on a site. But even in residential areas, it's very common in the old days that if you had too much water on your property for some reason, you put it in a pipe and you directed it somewhere else. And, and everyone kind of tolerated that, but I think as density goes up, those solutions aren't appropriate anymore. We had landslides in Perkins Way a couple winters ago because such conveyances fail. And they set off two large landslides. Geotech report on that and it's pretty clear. So anyway, I'd add stormwater management. David was talking about groups of trees and how to term, what term to use for them. I think the tree code currently uses the word groves for trees. Stand is more kind of a lumbering term. And a groves is what's in the current municipal code. And, and I would say that now looking down to six point three, there was discussion about right of way usage and standards or expectations when work was the right of way. And I think the idea that was motivated of your comments in the discussion, but not articulated was safety. There's nothing in that element that says safety is a, a high priority for all users of the right of way. So I would suggest adding that or something to that effect. And the, the last was just your administrative thing about the other docs. If not adapting by reference, by incorporation. It's a little bit tangled. I know years after such a thing is done, I've tried to uncover what language is actually current and understanding some situation. And since documents have their own lives independent of each other, you may be referring but incorporating a, a document that then changes. And so that in the future, the reference in, in this document to the old one or to the new one. And it introduces opportunity for confusion.
Julian, maybe we just, I think. Um, thank you. I didn't want to cut you off, but you've carried so much water. Speaking of water, I carried so much water for our community. I also didn't want to hold you hard and fast to the three minute rule. For those of you that don't know Julian Anderson, he is someone to know. He's done an incredible amount of work on behalf of our community for decades. And including leading the stewardship foundation and, and participating in the stewardship foundation for many years. So thank you for all you do to support, you know, the beautiful place we call home.
Yeah. Oh, so the one thing that's missing. Uh, because you need to say, well, if we take.
Is it Julian Anderson bust in the Animal Acres Park?
One very quickly, uh, is that it's the natural environment that's part of the character. That if I drive down the street and imagine all the trees and underbrush gone and some little ornamental things there, the character is different, even if the form and the, and the, and the other technical word that was there are the same. So I think that's missing, missing character.
Thank you so much. Good, good, uh, good point. Point taken. All right. Our agenda for the next meeting is, as you might guess, this. So I'll look forward to receiving your comments on the two sections we didn't cover tonight. I'll consolidate our comments from tonight and get those off to Christina. And yeah, I think that brings us to adjournment. If anybody would like to be the first to send us away with a motion.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Yay. All those in favor? Okay. All those opposed? None? Great. Have a great evening. Again, thank you so much for making time in your schedules for this extra meeting and we'll, I'll look forward to seeing you next Tuesday.
Yeah, thanks to staff as well for being here on an extra night.
Hundred percent. Thank you, guys. I, I'll be joining you virtually next week.